Welcome to the county commissioner.
Yeah.
How long has it been now, six, almost six months?
Well, he had been a commissioner a few years ago.
Okay, so he's, he's not, not new to.
Well, I just, how long have I wished I could get back in, and then after I got back in, I said, I wasn't out there long enough. But anyway, nice meeting you ladies.
It's been a while. Long enough that you forgot.
Yeah, I forgot.
Um, we prepared our twenty twenty four annual report just to kind of give you some data um as to kind of the work that we've done over the last year. And then Karina prepared our, our budget. And so I don't know if you want me to go through the report, if you just kind of want to read it on your own, and you can reach out to me if you have questions, but.
Can you just do us some highlights?
Yeah, so um as you know, we became, uh, we have been working for a couple of years to become a certified um community behavioral health clinic, which allows us to um increase our workforce, expand our services, have more specialized programs for those that have a similar um and persistent mental illness. And some of those programs have really allowed us to reduce hospitalizations, um help provide a lot more support, and hopefully prevent some homelessness and incarceration, uh incarceration. So a lot of the programs are really focused on reducing um those types of things with the people that we serve, uh and allow us to increase the, the number of services that we're providing, because what we were finding um with the old system is that we just didn't have the capacity to do that. And so with the additional um state funding that comes down as a result of the certification status, it allows us to increase um our workforce and um be able to expand the services and provide more services. So for instance, a few years ago, if you called in and you wanted to start services, it may take three or four weeks to get an appointment. Today, you can walk in on the same day that you would do it, um start the services. So it's.
That's amazing.
Yeah, it really is. It's, it's like, uh, we have designated hours every day that people walk in and start their services. And so it's been a really good thing, uh, because we know that people would know of um issues that if they have to wait three weeks, um, they may not show up to that appointment three weeks later if something has intervened. So we know that now if we offer that same day service, that they, they will be able to start services immediately. And you'll see in the data here that we um had three hundred and thirty-six um adults coming for our same day access services, and two hundred and three children come in last year and twenty twenty-four. These are new, unduplicated people that came in to seek same day services. And then most often will continue services beyond that time. And then our substance use services were a hundred and twenty-two um intakes or admissions for adults and eleven for, for youth that, that came in um under the age of eighteen. You'll see on that second page, the client impact data that we served thirteen hundred and seventy-nine unduplicated clients through all of our services uh last year. And then it kind of gives you the age breakout. You can see that we have a large number of adults here in our county that, that are seeking um services, quite a few children. Nice thing is, is that we're able to provide um services in the schools with our therapists and case managers. So this, one, it's helped for parents not having to take our work and get kids to appointments, so they don't have absenteeism, absenteeism issues. And it also, um, if kids are missing lots of school, that's not good either. And so if they have lots of appointments. So we generally work with the schools to take them out of their classes for a little while. Um, they're non, uh, generally not their core courses. And so we are in every school. Uh, now that Highland is here in Columbus, we, we have found that uh we have largely, we've hired additional staff um for, for next school year because we were, we were there so frequently every day.
I've heard really good things about the school program.
Oh, great.
My daughter's a teacher.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you for that.
Very highly of that.
Thank you very much.
Now, you're uh Cherokee County, but now do, does Crawford County and all of, any other area counties come to your facility?
So we've served Cherokee County primarily as a, as a certified community behavioral health clinic. We can't, it's similar to like a hospital, if they show up in your emergency department, you can't turn anyone away. But generally what we would do is we would stabilize their, their mental health crisis. And then once they're stabilized, we would help refer them back to their area and coordinate services. Now, there are times when there may be, sometimes like we have um kind of an EAP with um Crawford County to provide services to their, maybe their law enforcement, because they work in such partnerships that they don't maybe want to go to their own county. And they would see our law enforcement if they chose to go to Crawford County. So sometimes when there's a conflict or um there's an employee that works at Crawford County or about county or health, they would maybe come here to not seek services at, at their place of employment. But in general, um, the majority of the people that we serve are from Cherokee County. And that would be any funding that the county would, that allows us. It is always, we make sure that it only goes to Cherokee County residents. It will not be attributed to any other resident or resident of the county that seeks services with us.
Stacy, on these client serve and the parenting and divorce services, are those qualified or are they court mandated or counseling?
Yes, so we, we started these for the, the eleven condition, those were several years ago. And so really all the counties, they do come to that. It's a parenting and divorce class that we hold, and it meets the requirement for parents that are going through divorce, um, if they have children. And so it's a class that we hold if they come in, um, attend that class, so they can, um, like, as well.
Do you offer any mediation?
We do not do the mediation. Um, we haven't seen that as a huge uh request or need. But we're always looking at potential, you know, other avenues of service. So if, if that, well, we really try to make things that we can do. And so we've, um, been trying different things that we can provide in the community to try and, you know, those needs. So we want to roll that, that was something that we recently presented with us. Good questions. So um our, um, I think I talked a little bit last year about our individual placement and support services. It's a new program. And it is us helping um with, again, those with a serious economic illness, adults that um are not employed but are looking for employment. So we um have services that it's, uh, we are doing outreach with employers here in Cherokee County to see if they have the interest in working with our clients um for employment purposes. And uh we have, have seen some success with this program. Um, it's still really in the early stages of development. But we have helped um a number, uh, as you can see, the job diversity, home health, janitorial, manufacturing, retail. And we've had, uh, in the last year, um, good success in helping um our clients find either hard or full-time jobs that they're looking for. So it's, it's really helpful to a lot of our employers here too, that, you know, have really shared that they have some work for an order service. Um, and we provide support to that employer and to the employee through the pro, the entire process, and even beyond the, when the employee is employed, to help them continue to, to sustain their employment. So we'll help with inter, you know, preparing for interview, applications, um, you know, what to wear, just kind of a lot of encouragements or guidance, as much or as little as the client wants, as much as the client wants. And then um, of course, we talked about our um service members, veterans and their family members. And uh, one of the service members. Oh, some of the community outreach, I think, is important, because again, that is something that we, we really focus on as well, um, to uh provide resources uh to those in our communities. So we provide um mental health first aid trainings. We had two last year. And really, it is, it is um to help teach individuals how to recognize and respond and understand if someone is having a mental health or substance use crisis and what to do and tell, you know, maybe help them right. So it's really good for like law enforcement, first responders, educators, um, even really anybody in the community, because um, you know, we, we all have ran into individuals that are having some mental health issues. So we offer those classes um free to the community.
Have you had uh participation from law enforcement?
Mm-hmm, yes, we do. So, and we, we frequently offer them um pretty much every year, because if they have new, you know, deputies or officers come in, or sometimes it's not the right time of year, it's busy, you know, so we really try to coordinate. Um, and sometimes we just pull them a special class just for lone workers. If people from the community aren't attending that class, but we would offer it. So uh we did that for um an agency that wanted to get their, their employees trained. And so uh we just did a training specifically for the agency and their employees. Um, then of course, we um have our, uh, we partner with a family here in um the Cherokee County area that um has a suicide prevention awareness walk each year.
Has a what?
Um, it's a suicide awareness and prevention walk, and we actually start here at the courthouse. And, and September is National Suicide Prevention Awareness Week, so we hold it on a Sunday evening in September. We've done it, I think, around three years now. And we've had a lot of community participation, um, I think over a hundred people have shown up for the last two years. So it's been very successful to help. Really, we set up a little booth too with all of our information for people that maybe need assistance and kind of having resources for mental health or suicide awareness prevention and who they can call if they're in a mental health crisis. Uh, but, but there is also, you know, lots of other community partners that are, that are showing up. So, um, and then we have had our um thirty annual health favorites, a resource fair, and we, we encourage other community partners to join us at our wellness center, where we really just have uh booths set up to uh.
I had a funny story earlier. There's never.
We had um a booth set up, and so did the other vendors, to really um provide resources to families. Um, so, so they know what they can access here in their own county, what kinds of supports they have. And so um that has been helpful. The last couple of years, we've kind of combined it with Halloween, um, and provided a safe venue for kids to trick or treat and, and opportunity for families to do something with their children, who sometimes have some little things. But then they're there really picking up the resources and information about our county and helping them uh if, if they're having issues in different areas. So lots of, lots of good things. And then of course, the, the most exciting thing, I think, is that we reached our full certification um as a certified community behavioral health clinic on July first of twenty twenty-four. And um that was a lot of work. It took um a couple of years to uh build up to that and build the infrastructure with grant funding. And um just been really thrilled with the work that our employees have put in and create resource for those that we serve. So we've just been really thrilled with, with this opportunity to, to obtain their services and coordinate our workforce, so. And of course, um, as you know, the county's support, you guys have always been encouraging and supportive of the programs that we're planning with our clients and our county, and everything has always been very appreciative, appreciative. It, it goes towards our uninsured and underinsured, help us meet, meet the needs of those that um aren't otherwise able to access the services that they might need. Do you have any questions about the report?
I always appreciate your presentation, because if you don't know about the services, I mean, it kind of helps us when we're talking with other people. You never know if someone has a need for something, and you offer diverse services. Awesome. I have a question on the financials.
Yes.
What's the definition of operating?
Operating cost is, if I want operating revenue.
Talking about the, the whole report.
Operating revenue, operating.
Is it the same as total revenue or total expenses?
It's everything that it takes to.
Okay, okay.
Keep us running.
Might be qualifying something. Thank you. So the net revenue would be your, does it, reserves?
Yes, that would go to the reserves.
So that doesn't reflect all of the reserves right now?
No.
The, that kind of is just a brief overview of the, and so we provided a full financial budget that's in your.
I'll take this with home with my night.
Yeah, I know, but it's so much.
But that's how you have to.
Yeah. Uh, so we did do a, uh, that's just kind of a little snapshot of twenty twenty-four. This is our, our uh budget for twenty twenty-five.
Thank you.
So um, I think Karina already submitted everything ahead of time that, that was requested in terms of, and we didn't have any changes this year from the jury. So.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate you. And.
Leading far enough about the syndrome.
But all the brochures, about, most all of our brochures, about our services, if you want more information on the specific services.
So I appreciate your time.
You know, I've heard a lot of good things. Uh, my daughter, she's in education, and she's uh always been, uh, been remarkable with some of the students.
That's great, thank you so much.
Lucky to have you.
Educators. I mean, of course, like, just teachers, right? She'll learn mental health.
Yeah, we, we will work, we, we want to work with anyone with, with our services.
Yes.
Sure. Can we get some of that?
After last week, or last weekend, I think I've, I'm on it for sure.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, after you're in your place, I think, I don't know if you have my email, but it is in the, I put my card in there.
Yeah, I got your card right there.
And so, um, I, oh, I did want to share with you, and, and it is in Lobeck County, but we are having a multi-county town hall meeting for our commission, legislators, um, city officials. Uh, anyone, community that wants to come, we're partnering with Lobeck Mental Health and Core County Mental Health.
Sounds interesting.
And um we'll have more details on time and location, but it will be in the evening on August twelfth in, in Lobeck County. And I'll send you invitations. I don't know if I have your email address, and I didn't see it on the uh county's website.
Okay.
But I still, I do have everybody's.
Stacy is very accessible.
Yeah.
Email or call her.
Okay.
You'll have it.
I'll send it to you.
Okay, very good.
Card?
Huh?
You have a card?
Well, you can just email me whenever you get a chance.
Okay.
And then I'll make sure you get the invitation as well.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
It was great seeing you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
It was nice meeting you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Hi Dale.
Hi Holly. How are you?
Good, how are you?
You cleared out this room. We had a room full, and I heard you all the time.
That's a good thing.
Brian.
Hey, how y'all doing?
All right, how are you?
No, I'm doing all right. I'm gonna stay back this way, but don't hesitate to look at me and point, and I'll be like.
Before you put on your, even I made them out my hat, I'm talking to the state rep hat. Say thank you for the brochure, the mailing.
Oh.
I really liked that summary of all the bills, and I especially liked that you put the address, so we could go look them up. But it was very interesting, and I still hang on to it, because I'm gonna look up a couple, just haven't got around to it. But I know right where it is, and that's unusual for me. It was a nice mailing, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Very informative. Jack, do you know Holly and Brian?
No, I guess so.
I'm not Holly.
I guess that's. Brian, nice meeting you.
Bryce Smith.
Holly, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, sir. Hey Brian. Welcome to the commissioner's.
Yeah.
Prepping.
Welcome back.
Welcome back. Oh, well, welcome back.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I kind of know if you guys got our budget. I think we just asked for the same we've done in the last few years, um, fifty-five thousand. But uh with that, I think the last year, we've done more than we've done in the last several years anyway. Part of what our office does, if you're not aware, is we provide some gap financing uh between the banks and businesses. Uh, the banks will loan a certain amount, and we can present, generally typically, we're about two percent of the banks, so we can, they need a little bit more for working capital or the purchase of building or remodel, we can provide that gap financing. And in the last uh year, we've already done four of those, just in the last year. We've done Carleen's down in Baxter, Route sixty-six hardware, Kicks Bar and Beer Gear, Bar and Grill in Galena, and Bama Finishing Solutions out of here.
That's Byma.
Byma, thank you.
Byma.
Byma, thank you. So we've done that, and we also, during the storm there in Baxter, we did a restart Kansas loan um for a business there somewhere in time that we were in. That's just one of the things um that we've done in there. Oh, Holly also reminded me, Grizzly Construction Galena um had one too, so I guess we've done five of those gap finance loans.
I'll point out the appropriation that we give does not fund that.
No, that's all through e-promotion, and we work with that, we're Kansas. But because of our office.
Right here is operating, I mean, it's, it's bare bones.
Our office wasn't there, those, that would not happen um for those startup businesses. And we got another one in the works right now, but that one's in the works, so we're quiet till we get that one finalized. Some other things our office has done, uh, we helped the county with, you're aware of the Rainbow Bridge. We helped get that twenty-five thousand dollar grant for Rainbow Bridge. Uh, we did a, a ten thousand dollar grant, it'll do the passports, the brochures for our advertising, Route sixty-six. That is to the printers, should be getting that pretty quick. And then the other thing we did, we did a community survey uh back in January, and we provided, used that information to make a strategic plan for our office. We're following that. The other thing, uh, with your fifty-five thousand, I think you guys are getting a pretty good thing for your buck on that, and that does not support our whole budget either. We do rely on memberships and some other things to finish our budget out, because we're now part of the Main Street Program, one of seven. And it's a county, state that's a county program, so. We're hoping for big things on that. And of course, one of the things we're doing through that is, and came through the strategic plan we did back in January, is we're gonna start having industry roundtables. We're gonna start out with bankers and realtors, getting them in the same room, being able to talk about some of the gap financing, so. They're meeting with the business that maybe needs a little more bump, we can be that little connecting the dots and things.
Your name was brought up this mi, this last week, I was over at Trinute, the county's Kansas regional planning commission. They had a lot of good things to say about you.
Oh, good. But uh if you have any questions about what we do or about our budget, uh, we'd gladly answer it. Brian's here as well as our, our chair, so we can answer any, I think, twenty-two of us, three of us, we can answer any questions you have.
Are you responsible for running the checks of the one percent we get from a casino?
Do I write? I don't work for Kansas Crossing anymore.
I thought you did.
No, I, about a year ago, I left. I'm now at one of the tribal properties, Buffalo Run. Yeah, they can be pretty busy down there, so. And so no, that, that comes from the state, not from the casino directly. But I, that's based on my knowledge.
This one, those areas, and it's really hard to quantify what the impact of economic development programs have.
And a lot of times, we meet with businesses that we don't provide loans or anything to. We just connect dots, like we have a business reach out, startup, they didn't need any financing, but they needed help writing their LLC and getting their paperwork filed at the states. And we, we work with them on that stuff too. So it's not, it's not just gap financing.
Yeah, we've been a go-through between, you know, county, people in the county looking for help with businesses and the small business. SBDC, yeah, sorry, have to think that through. So I mean, they show with uh SBDC, SBDC has worked, you know, with our office pretty closely to do that type of stuff. We feel like economic development, and Bert says it's like trying to nail Jello, Jell-O to a wall, it's tough to explain, but we do feel like we're making impact.
Any questions?
Like I said, your name is all of us, I've heard that he's ahead. They got several, they got a lot of money, and we need to get used up if we're gonna hang on.
For the planning commission.
Columbus got that project, which is, this week, they're doing a new service system down here.
Yeah, so one of the things also quietly we're working behind the scenes is, they got to build um, build Kansas Fund. Um, so we're trying to connect water districts, cities, uh, Columbus is working with them. And, and we're not really writing the grants for them or connecting the dots for that. Real Water Forward is working on a project right now that we're connecting those dots. So I mean, we ourselves are not writing the grants, but if it wasn't for our, those dots would not be connected, so those people can get those grants.
For those um matching grants or loans or.
Loans.
Loans, all strictly loans, not giveaway? They do have, I mean, just from what we have given them from our, our funds for management, and I know they manage many different entities, so. They have picked up a lot of money in the last four years. I have to say, I was kind of a negatively nally on the board when we're splitting up these duties here, but it has worked beautifully. It's basically like two directors for the price of one.
Well, in my opinion, it's nice to have additional staff, because in the past, when we just had one, it's, it's really difficult for anybody to get, to, to kind of stand on top of the whole vision. Um, and so having the ability to split through is, is nice. The limitation is that, you know, our, our budget is pretty limited, so, yeah, we would love to have more staff, so we can, you know, put people in charge of projects, and they just, right now, we're, we're working with what we have.
So one of the things we did, we did have, in twenty-four, I was a director just solely by myself. When I left for DePico, we split it with Holly and I, and so kind of our budget, we're part-time now. We did do away with some of the benefits to kind of make the budget work, so. A little more funding would be great, um, bring back some of those benefits and stuff that we gave up and worked hard time, kind of reduced salaries and stuff. But we're still, we're still making progress, and I think we've done more in the last few months than we've done in a while, so.
And lots of ideas to stand up with that, but.
That we don't have time. We're prioritizing our, our, our needs there. One of the things you'll be seeing in the next year though is, we're focusing on is the workforce. One of the things you'll be seeing in the next year a little is we're focusing on this workforce. So we've got a plan for that, and we'll be initiating this and building workforce.
Yeah, that came up in the strategic planning, just kind of feedback on workforce and availability of, of help. So we'll see what we can do.
I think those meetings were the key, and it's a difficult, but those key business people, and you have such a great representation throughout the county of good-sized employers who put their time out to give the very valuable feedback and kind of gives you direction.
Over here, we got a lot of information on those, those strategic needs.
Boy, do you have anything, questions, concerns?
No.
You guys have anything for us?
Uh, no, beyond what we've already presented.
Yeah?
Thank you for your time.
Yes, for sure.
Good to meet you all.
Thanks. It takes off, Brian, I know it's work for you, even though you're coming from a different direction than I thought.
Oh, I'm gonna go work my own for the rest of that.
Oh, good. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
And you too, thanks. You really have made a good duo, weren't you, Tim?
Has Holly always worked with them?
No, she's, no, to me, she came on the bill with her, she's coming through January.
I really like her.
She came from far Euro, very efficient. That's why I thought you might go up.
I've seen her before.
Yeah, she's very good.
Very, very efficient.
Like that's, I think, you guys, we're talking about very.
Two more.
Close on a cut.
So when you review these, I'm just curious, so you review these at another time and you approve them?
We go through and decide.
I wonder.
Just have kind of one long work session.
So just reviewing these, you're not, you have to make a motion every time you approve one?
No, we just give the numbers to the clerk's office.
I was just curious, I didn't know how that works.
Start putting them in, see how it works out.
Oh, with bottom bottom.
And it starts working magic. Comes back with news.
Interesting process.
Sometimes it's good, sometimes it's not.
And didn't he thought to, Marshall, we could have some land if we rebuilt the health center, health department? We have to, we have to at least temporary holders, hopefully didn't. If we were gonna put it back there.
What's on the corner there?
Pardon?
What's on the corner? It's a vacant lot. Yeah, isn't that a vacant lot?
Well, it is, and the element, so. I had thought about that, but, you know, it's a pretty good size.
Mm-hmm.
Built up on top of it.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Yeah, but engineered metal building and.
The dirtwork would start first instead of after the.
Don't build it down, don't build it down on the valve.
That can be a parking lot. That can be a parking lot. I mean, if you did it there, then it could stay in the building until it was finished and just move right on floor.
I didn't know what you all know about, though. I didn't know.
Oh, I don't know.
Hey, Delinda, are you in the office? Oh, okay, okay. You can't help you. Uh, I hope you're enjoying it. I forgot about your conference. I hope you're enjoying it, and I'll be locked. Yeah, I, okay, well, I'll catch one of the girls. Thank you. Bye-bye. You know what we desperately need? Um, the clerk's office has always given us a sheet of all the numbers, telephone numbers.
All numbers.
And they're all bad now.
New phone, very tricky.
Oh, is that the new one?
Well, how'd you get that? What happened for you? Jackie Delmar?
Where's your vote?
Do we need to take them? Can I have that?
Yeah, I was getting a paper template.
I don't, but I can call it on that phone over there and put it on speaker.